Hi, good morning. My name is Vicki Iozia. I'm the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Citrus County. I want to welcome everybody here. I want to welcome our public and I want to welcome the candidates for school board. Please mute or turn off your cell phones so that we don't have any interruptions. And this meeting is going to be recorded for our members who couldn't be here today. It's all my electrical energy that must be doing this. How's that?
I don't know.
How's that? I touched something. I don't know what I was trying to touch. But everybody, please stand and we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. Today, the library, I help the inheriting seniors from America. Mr. Ray Gaver, Ms. Jean Smith, congregation, you're in the room. In here, with your seat, we do this as part of it. And we'll have a moment of silence first. Thank you. As you can imagine, it takes a lot of work to get something like this set up. So I would like to introduce the board members who work on this. Some of them are not here because they're advocating in other places. But if you hear me call your name, please stand up. If you're already standing, just give a royal wave. Linda Abels is not here today. Scott Baldwin. There's Scott. Hi, Scott. Beverly Brown. Maxine Connor. I saw you just walk in. Hi. Dr. BJ Azell could not be here today. I'm here. Vicki Iozia, I'm here. Jan Hall is out there registering people. Rosemary Nils, who was our speaker today, and as she goes. Peg Fromo, who was co-vice, co-president. And Deborah Stager was our treasurer, was very shy out there. We have members who are candidates and there are three of them. Laura Gatlin Wright, Doug Cloud, and Judith Vowles. I want to introduce our new members. I see one of them here. I don't see the other. Mandy Moore and Lonnie Zing. On your seat, you found something that looked like this. And this is reminders of what's coming up. It tells you about our future meetings. We have June meeting. We have July meeting and we have a special meeting at the end of July. It tells you about our website, the newsletter, and our Facebook page. A June meeting. Rosemary, is there a June meeting here?
It's not, no. Citrus, Frank.
Yeah. Then don't believe what you read here.
Um, I think, um, yeah.
It's so amazing, you know? We get three, four people taking a look at this and I'm just looking and I'm going, oh my God. Our June meeting is at the Citrus Springs Community Center. Our July meeting is at the Citrus Spring Community Center. And our special meeting is here at the library. It's on the June. So if you have any questions about future meetings, don't ask me. Ask one of the other board members. It's now my pleasure to introduce our guest speaker, Rosemary Nils. She's a very dedicated member of the League. She stays up all night doing things so that we're prepared for our meetings. She's our first vice president, our education chair, our gun safety chair. She's also had many letters to the editor published in the journal. She's active with the State League of Women Voters also. She's going to speak to us about partisan school board elections. So please help me welcome Rosemary Nils.
Morning, everybody. Thank you, Vicki. Good morning, everybody. So glad to see our candidates here. So many members of the public. I think we may have scared away last, some of the people who had to stand last time and who weren't allowed into the meeting. Because we have a much smaller crowd today. Vicki, go put the slides up?
Yes, I know.
Okay. So it just happens to be Nurses Week. And I know we have a few nurses here. But more than that, in this particular topic, on this particular day, it is Teacher Appreciation Week. I know we have a lot of retired teachers. We have two active teachers who are candidates. Only one could be there. They both have high stakes testing today. But we want to give a big shout out to everything our educators do for our kids, for our parents, for our communities. We appreciate you. The League is a strong supporter of public education. So in the spirit of education, let's start with a quiz. Okay, get you woke up. These are true, false. My cousin Jeffrey, he's from Volusia County. He is allowed to run for school board in Citrus County and he's thinking about it. True or false? He's allowed to run here. Truth? False. Most of you don't know, okay? The answer is it's true. Under a new law passed in 2023, he or anyone else can run for school board in this county or any other county. Don't have to stay in their home district unless they win. Now, if they win, they have to come. Okay, all right. But still, think about that. We'll talk more about that. Just getting you warmed up. Here's another one for you. True or false? The primary in August isn't nearly as important as the general election in November. True? False. Okay. You guys pass. Okay, about the League. We were founded more than 100 years ago to educate voters, defend democracy. We're a nonpartisan political nonprofit organization. I know that's a mouthful. We do not endorse or oppose any candidates or parties. And we strive, especially in meet and greet meetings like this, to treat every candidate fairly. We research, educate, and advocate. And that's what some of our statewide committees do. However, after in-depth research, the League does and will take positions on issues of importance to voters, such as this one. Okay, let's talk about the school board constitutional duties. Okay, thanks Vicki for doing that. Okay, quickly, we have five candidates in the room who have a big job, whichever are elected. Language rights for Florida Constitution. Operate, control, supervise all public schools in the district and determine the rate of taxes. There's more. Big job for these people. They have to adopt curriculum and behavior standards and policies. Establish schools, school attendance areas, and the school calendar. They have to govern the personnel matters. And they come up a lot in a big district like this. They have to collectively bargain with the school employees' salaries. And they have to adopt standards of ethical conduct for instructional personnel and school administrators. So these five candidates are applying for a very big job. And that's why it's so important that you listen to them, hear from them. So I'm not really here to talk about them, but something else that you're going to be dealing with. And we do have one candidate who's an incumbent. I don't want to fail to acknowledge Sandy Kance, who is a retired teacher herself. So what's new for voters in November? Of course, you know about the big ones, which we don't need to talk about. But in November, Floridians are going to be voting on six constitutional amendments. Six of them. So our job is to educate ourselves about it. We will have another meeting later in the summer or early fall where we'll talk about all six. But today, the focus is Amendment One, which would change our current nonpartisan school board elections to partisan elections. Right now, these candidates don't list their party. Our school board elections have been nonpartisan since 1998. And that happened when 64% of Floridians said yes to a constitutional amendment for nonpartisan school board elections. So if this amendment is passed, future ballots are going to list each party's, each candidate's party. But school boards will also become part of Florida's closed primary. And that has a lot of implications I want to explain to you. So why are we doing this? Well, in the 2023 session in Florida Legislature, both the House and the Senate, and then the governor signed a bill that would propose this amendment to the Constitution requiring school board members to be elected in partisan elections. The stated reasoning was to make school board elections more transparent and comparable to other elections. Right now, it's only school boards and judges that are nonpartisan. Just a little piece of information. Our own local representative, Ralph Masulo, was one of the co-sponsors of that bill. Okay, the ballot language, I've kind of already talked to you about. This is the fancy wording. School board elections become partisan if it passes beginning with the 2026 election cycle. However, I want you to look at that and realize that is the proposed, the anticipated language. Sometimes between the time a law is passed and the time it gets to us, either at the voting booth or in our mail, it looks different. So my caution to all of you is when your ballot comes in the fall or when you go to vote, check that language. Sometimes the language is changed to something that is a little more confusing for voters. Read carefully. That's why the teachers teach us to read. Okay. So what will your votes mean? A yes would be, I want to change all Florida's school board elections to partisan. A no vote would keep them nonpartisan. We need a 60% majority of yes votes. So let's talk a little more. Now, I want to clarify, I am not an expert on elections. If you have questions about elections, detailed questions, I want you to take them to our supervisor of elections. And I do have her information on the last slide. But I'm going to talk to you about the implications of our decision come November. And it does have to do with elections. So in a nonpartisan election, every registered voter gets to vote, regardless of our party. We're Democrat, we're Republican, if we're no-party affiliation. That's called NPA. So if you hear me say NPA, they haven't chosen a party. We also have the Green Party, the constitutional parties, which are kind of lumped into a basket called minor parties because there's not a lot of, they don't consider that. In a nonpartisan election, the candidate who gets 50% of the votes plus one becomes the winner. So that could happen in August if one of these candidates gets 50% plus one more vote. But if they don't, then the top two go to a runoff come November. But by law, partisan elections in Florida are closed primaries. So this is not an open, it would change very much how the elections are conducted. Okay. As we said, a lot of things happen in the primary. Local elections are many times decided. So let's think about the implications. I'm not going to go into deep detail here. I went through this with my husband the other night. He's like, he's politically astute. He's like, what? Stop, stop, partisan, nonpartisan. So just, I'll go through it quickly. Okay, by law, Florida is a closed primary state. So if school board elections do become partisan, they're going to have to adule, to adhere to all the rules of a partisan primary. In a closed primary, only voters of a party can vote in that primary. So to give you an example, Republicans are going to vote in the Republican primary, Democrats in the Democratic Party. NPAs don't get a vote in a primary, nor do minor party candidates. Well, that happens to be about 30% of Florida's population. A lot of our citizens, our neighbors, don't like to declare a party and they have their reasons. Okay. Now, there is one exception to a universal primary contest. So there is one opportunity in which all voters could vote. And that's if all the candidates are of the same political party. Right now, the sheriffs, they're all Republicans. So that primary would then become what is called a universal primary contest or UPC. And that means Democrats and NPAs, minor parties, would be able to vote. And the reason that happened is again, another constitutional amendment by the citizens in Florida in 1998 said, wait a minute. If it's only the same party, that's not fair that only one party gets a say. So in that case, if there's no opposition in November, then everybody should be allowed to vote. And those primaries are decided in the summer. So the winner takes all. Okay. So I made a little graphic. Being a teacher, I'm like my graphic organizers. What I just said, nonpartisan school board primaries, everybody votes, everybody gets a voice. A voice partisan, you have to vote in your party's primary. That's nearly 4 million voters of the smaller parties. And then I did mention the universal primary contest that is the exception. Okay, again, not the expert. Refer your questions to the supervisor. Okay, next. Did you know the new legislation passed in 2023 permits candidates from outside our county to run for our local school board? School board or any, they need to move only if elected. So so think about what non-resident partisan candidates could bring. If we go to partisan plus non-resident, would they be familiar with our local district? Would they be focusing on a narrow political agenda? We don't know. It hasn't happened yet, but it may be happening right now in Florida. Okay, another graphic organizer for you. Okay. So these are things for you to consider as you make your choices. I know it's a long way away. There's a lot, it's gonna, a lot of water is gonna roll under the bridge between now and November. But I want you to keep these things in mind and we'll give you something to take home. Okay. One of the biggest arguments about partisan school board elections is exactly... Oh, sorry, I know wrong one. Okay. Arguments in favor. The advocates who wanted to see this said, look, we need to be more transparent in our experts or in our elections. School board races are all ready partisan. Let's face it, it's easy for us to find out a candidate's party affiliation. But the advocates believe that voters want to know upfront the name of the party that the candidates are with so that they can get an idea of their ideology and maybe be able to predict how voters are, or how voters predict how a candidate might vote on a controversial issue based on their political party. Also, I think I'm not telling you all anything when we all acknowledge how political education has become nationally, statewide. Some of our local or our counties across the state, you probably hear about in the news how volatile they have become, how superintendents are leaving or being asked to leave because of the political politicization. The new legislation has made it much harder. So some people say, well, hey, they're already partisan. Let's just call it what it is. And the, one of the main reasons is, well, look, all the other races are partisan other than judges, county commissioners, sheriffs, even in this county are school superintendent. That's a partisan race. So why should school board races be any different? Okay. Now, there are reasons that, to consider why Amendment One wouldn't be such a good idea. And the biggest one, the first one, is what I've already explained to you about how many voters would be excluding, excluded from voting in the primary where a lot of the times the election is over. So you don't get a second chance in November. So that's the biggest one. The disenfranchisement of so many voters. Keep in mind that the League's, one of our main position is making sure that every eligible voter has access to the vote when they should. Okay. And when you, go ahead Vicki. Just some advantages of nonpartisanship I want to point out. How a good board currently functions, an effective board. They collaborate, they compromise, they have to make tough decisions. But they always keep in mind the greater good of students, the parents, the community, the teachers. And also, think about how schools serve as community centers where parents and other volunteers work together. Our schools, think about our schools in Citrus County, they're hubs. Everybody feels welcome and everybody should feel welcome. We would hate to see partisan agendas get in the way of making feel, making everyone feel comfortable, everyone welcome. Okay. Additional arguments, okay, we're kind of, these kind of all flow together. Once you get that politically charged environment, let's say we do have partisan elections. Are our candidates then making decisions based on party line? Are they trying to support their party's agenda rather than using firsthand knowledge and experience of the district's needs? Issues, best interest? Are they thinking of the parents or are they pleasing their party? It's hard to work in politically polarized, politically charged environment. I think all of us have had experiences in our lifetime. A good school board, as we said, needs that collaboration and compromise for the greater good of the school community. You're going to have to make, and you do make unpopular decisions. And so we want to make sure that partisan school board members aren't focused on pleasing their parties rather than doing what's best. We don't want to have problems not solved, needs not met. We want school board members who are there for the kids, for the families. Okay. When you're in a politically charged environment, what happens next? You could end up with fewer applications from board members, administrators, highly qualified teachers. Tying school board's elections to political parties. We risk limiting the candidate pools to individuals who align with those specific ideologies. So this could, especially for a school board, this could exclude candidates who are qualified, who would be great candidates, but they don't want to line up with this party or this party. So we might become deprived of potentially exemplary board members and even keeping superintendents and teachers as we have seen in some of the highly political districts in Florida. And then think about the role of volunteers. We've kind of touched on this already. They come from many walks of life, parents, grandparents, retirees, community members who care. They work with the teachers, the library media specialist, and the kids during and after school. They are selected by school board and administrators and they enrich the offerings and provide personal connections with the larger community. Parents, volunteers serve on PTOs, the school advisory committee called the SAC. They work on district board advisory teams such as budget, curriculum material selection, and other things. So there's a lot of volunteerism. Where a concern is that partisanship may discourage that involvement. Am I good for time, Vicki? Get in there. Okay, bear with me, almost done. Okay, so now back, back up. Back up. Okay, yeah. Okay, so it kind of all flows. Now we think of the campaign. What's the purpose of a political campaign, a school board campaign? It's to educate the voters of our communities about what are the issues? What do you see as most important, less important? How would you solve things in our district? Tell us about yourselves and your approach. So your job is to educate us. But now think about how it would be if this were highly partisan and politically charged. Would we have that same level of discussion? Would, or would it become less constructive, less substantive among the candidates? We don't want a narrow focus on political issues and political points of view. This could actually become vitriolic and worse yet, discourage voters from coming out because what's the use? Okay. And then along with that comes the financial contributions. Most school board elections, contributions tend to be smaller, locally based. Imagine if the national parties and the National Political Action PACs are called start donating to some districts. You think it can't happen, but think of some of the larger districts that are hotbeds of controversy. Okay, we already talked about the implications of non-resident candidates with a partisan agenda. So think of someone who might choose or be chosen to run in a district to bring a party's particular view into that district. That person would lack the experience, the familiarity with local people, local issues. We should be able to count as voters on candidates who know us, our kids, our community, our needs. Okay, so all of that takes you to the very bottom. I've given you any number of arguments against the exclusion of NPA and minor party voters in the primaries, vitriol of campaigns not focused on the real issues at hand, out-of-district candidates, huge campaign contributions, party loyalty, emphasis on partisan political stances. All of that can lead to an erosion of the local control that we value. And you know, having lived in this community 11 years now, I've come to love this community because of the community spirit we see. We don't want partisan policies overshadowing the best interests of students, our families, our staff. Okay. So I think you could probably figure this out because I was around the, we spent months. We started early or mid, middle of the year 2023, looking at all the issues. A ton of research. And this was the League's Education Committee, a smaller subcommittee. We believe in public education. That's one of our main priorities along with voting. We believe that public education is the cornerstone of our democracy. And so we want public education to be free from outside political influences. We believe that parents, teachers, kids, community members, school boards, working together without partisan obstruction are going to make the best decisions for our kids. So we believe that school boards will best serve our communities, our students if school board elections remain nonpartisan. So that is the League's position. And I do have permission. This material will become part of the Speaker's Bureau this summer. Okay, for more information, we do have a couple of things we're going to give you after all the speakers today. If you want to see more about the League's positions on education, look up League of Women Voters, scroll down their page. I have a big box on education and then you click on that. Takes you to trifolds, the white paper, a lot of information. Now, I'm going to be available after the meet and greet. Vicki has to tell me if there's any time left. I have a feeling there's not. Again, refer your specific election questions to the supervisor of elections. And just my last caution, don't forget, August is coming. You need to update your registration if, if you need to. If your signatures changed, your address changed, you, maybe you want to change parties. Don't forget, if you'd like to vote by mail, to request that vote by mail ballot. It's no longer automatic. And don't forget, your voice is your vote. So vote in the primary and vote again in November. We can certainly, Vicki, we'll give you some additional material to take home. And Vicki, you tell me after there's time for questions. Okay. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Rosemary. That's a lot of information, I know.
Somebody's got to be the heavy, right? Now, we have five candidates who have accepted the invitation to introduce themselves and talk about their plans. These introductions will be a maximum of three minutes long. I will be timing. And how many of you were here at the last meeting? So you know exactly what I'm going to say, right? Made you chuckle before I even said it. I'm going to be timing at 2 o'clock. In two, two minutes, you will see the yellow panel. At three minutes, you will see the red panel. If you keep going over three minutes, I'm going to shake it. If I shake it and that doesn't work, we have a special hook that's going to come. Stage. We have live candidates. We do not have, gee, that doesn't sound right. Laura Gatlin Wright is a live also.
Laura Galen Wright is alive also, but she cannot come today because she's a teacher and she's working with her students and helping them with the exams that they need to take. So she, I know is going to be on time because I have a YouTube video that I'm going to show of her. After the candidates introduce themselves, each participant will be at their own table space and you can go over and ask individual questions. And they have brochures and informational handouts. Are there any questions before I warm up my pants? Okay. The order of the candidates is first, our candidate from District Two, Sandy Count.
How the rest of the guys are District Two, I'm District Four.
Oh.
I wrote it wrong.
Alright. District Four, Sandy Count.
To get in three minutes, I'm going to really rely on these notes. Don't get waved. I have twenty-eight years of classroom experience and twenty-five years of coaching experience and twenty years in business experience. And I want you to let my experience um be the voice for your children. Was born in New York, was raised in, educated in Dallas County. I have an AA from St. EJ C and a BA in English Speech Education from University of South Florida. My daughter has vested means, she went to St. Leo and has a degree in biology from St. Leo. And then she went on to do her masters in educational leadership. And she is a teacher over at LaCanto Middle School, teaching eighth and, and seventh grade science. In her twentieth year, so she's way ahead of her mommy. In the classroom, I experienced the desegregation of Florida schools, the advent of computers, changing goals, objectives, so the accreditation reviews, book adoptions, changing graduation requirements, uh, the current intrusion of excessive testing, closing schools down because of COVID and reopening them because of COVID over. I've been a department head, I've worked in Tallahassee on the FCAT reading test. I've been honored as a Teacher of the Year and I've coached high school swim and dive teams for twenty-five years and I'm a team player. In the business world, I owned and operated Crystal River Real Estate and I brought the first Renax franchise to Crystal River. I served multiple years as an officer or director for the Board of Realtors and I taught uh the professional standards and ethics section of the orientation for brand new Realtors and the board. My board experience involved working in Tallahassee and that helped because we speak with Tallahassee as educators. Um, I understand contractual law, I read and draw floor plans and can analyze bids. I did residential appraisal, so I do understand cost and I recognize sales techniques. And sometimes no is just a good business decision. As a, an elected school board member and sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, I immediately attended state forums sponsored by the Florida School Board Association. We go every June and November to further my education and maintain my certification. I also require, do the required ethics course every year and I file my Form Six uh Financial Disclosure. I travel to Tallahassee every year to attend the legislative days, sometimes to no avail. I'm a board representative for staff committees for five schools. I'm a member of the African American Read-In Committee and my job is to provide the African American Committee with readers for their um read-in at the last Sunday of February. Um, I'm also a member of the advocacy committee at the state level and I mentioned this, that we did this African American read-in and we were surprised, I think this might be a very unique situation in Citrus County. I serve on the following committees, calendar committee, code of conduct, long-range planning, pupil progression at the middle school and I'm also the school board representative for the Value Adjustment Board meeting. I want to make our classrooms a pleasant experience for every one of our children. And I never approach a problem without, with possible solutions.
Well, how many of you are familiar with Toastmasters?
Yeah.
Okay, well, in Toastmasters, we time people too, but you've got a lot in there. So our next candidate to speak is Dale Merrill.
Hi, I'm Dale Merrill and I'm running for school board District Two because I believe that we need to do something with better behavioral health in our school system. I am the only candidate who has a complete background, education and training to be effective in this position. I started my career as educator, I taught for a few years and then I went into the business world. I managed offices throughout the United States, Canada, Mexico and Europe. And about dealt with large clients like 3M, Eli Lilly, Train Corporation on implementing major computer mission critical systems in their corporations. And this kind of background is very important because we have a lot of growth going on in our county and this is directly applicable to that. When I decided to adopt a child as a single parent, I decided I had to go back to school. I couldn't travel anymore for a living, so I became an attorney and went to law school. And uh, I've been an attorney now since ninety-eight. And my practice is in the area of criminal defense. And I also volunteer as a teen court judge. In the course of that work as a criminal defense lawyer, I've seen the impact on our community of bad behaviors in the school system that spill over. And children that really need to learn appropriate behaviors so they can become appropriate citizens. I look how this impacts the problem of our bus drivers, our teachers and the entire community. When I represent a youngster who breaks into a house here in Crystal River and holds people at gunpoint, steals their car and gets away, eventually he's caught. Yeah, I see that youngster and I look at the fact that his father's been in prison, his mother's a drug addict. His child has had no opportunity whatsoever, this child was going to fail. Our community needs to step up to help children like that. Lead that, we need to work on developing systems in our schools. With my own daughter, she was in um a regular public school and I managed to get her into a special program that dealt with behavior management. And the proof of that success is that all the children who are in the program with her do not have a criminal record, they all graduated high school, they all passed the state standardized test and became productive citizens. Today, my daughter is a mother of a lovely little girl and a good citizen. And I want that for all of our citizens, all of our children here in Citrus County. And that's why I'm running for school board at this point. As a teen court judge, I see the impact of these children in our society. I see how they are going out, committing crimes and I want to put a stop to that. And the appropriate way to do that is by implementing in the school system. We have children who have disabilities, behavior management disabilities and we need to address those behavior management disabilities, give them better behavioral health. Thank you.
Our next speaker is on video, so I will move over to the computer and turn it off so you can hear that. And she will be under three minutes also.
Hi, I'm Laura Galen Wright and I am a candidate from Citrus County School Board District Two. I'd like to tell you a little bit about my background, I was born and raised in Citrus County. I went through the public schools here K through twelve. Then I went on to get my bachelor's degree at St. Leo University in Elementary Education. Later, I got my masters in educational leadership. I married my high school sweetheart and we have two beautiful children. My son Harrison is ten and my daughter Ridley is five, soon to be six. I started teaching here in Citrus County Schools in two thousand and eight and throughout my fourteen years here, I have had many different roles and taught many different grades. I've served on the district's budget committee, I went through added training, I've led professional developments. I also have various certifications in the middle grades math and gifted and reading endorsement. The reason why I am running for school board is because I am very passionate about my community, this is my home and I care about it. When I first started teaching in Citrus County Schools, I actually started at the elementary that I grew up. It was an eye-opening experience to work alongside the same teachers that taught me and helped me get to the place that I am today. Working alongside them showed me how much time and effort they put into their career to make magic happen in the classroom. I care about Citrus County Schools. I worry about what's going to happen the next five to ten years with teacher retention recruitment. Area is growing with the in-home cost of being almost three hundred thousand dollars. However, recently released data states that Florida is the busiest state for the average teacher pay. This can be problematic when it comes to teacher recruitment and retention. I would love to increase teacher and paraprofessional salaries. However, if that is something that is not in the cards for our budget, I would like to look at other things to make Citrus County an attractive area to work. One of those things is affordable insurance, especially the family plan. I would also like to seek options for affordable childcare for our teachers and staff. Our current option for maternity leave is to use up our sick days that we have collected. Once those are gone, we can use unpaid FMLA time up to twelve weeks. However, during our current economic climate, that's very hard for families, especially starting family, to go without three months of pay. I believe teacher retention recruitment is important because we want what's best for students. And having qualified educators that feel supported in the classroom is statistically the best service we can give our students for better learning rates. Another initiative I would like to focus on when I'm elected for school board is our current policies on bullying and student欺. I believe in accountability for students' actions. Right now, we have various disruptions throughout the school day and that takes away from student learn. I would especially like to look at our current policy on bullying. I understand parents' frustration when it comes to their child's safety, especially within the classroom, because I know that feeling all too well. I would love the opportunity to work with our local and state leaders to ensure that teachers feel supported and valued in the classroom and that our students are getting the education that they deserve. Thank you.
The back line. Our next candidate is Victoria Smith.
Hello, uh, I'm ha- happy to be here. Um, I have to lead my students today also, I'm a teacher, have been for over twenty-five years and they also were taking a state mandated test, but I did have someone cover after, once I got them started. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I started in Hernando County and while I was there, I was part of the professional development team with the Hernando Classroom Teachers Association. I became um math, I became, sorry, I got a masters in education, I also became nationally board certified. I also was a part of aligning the textbooks to the FCAT because at that time, our textbooks did not have the standards in there. I became department chair in, in my school, I was part of the budget and the scheduling. And then I moved to Citrus County when my husband passed away. I wanted to move to a neighboring county since my family was still living in Hernando County. And while I was there, while I became here and I've been at Citrus High School ever since, I worked with the district creating formative assessments for our state mandated test. I also have always been on committees for the textbook adoption. And I became, where we had to get our paraprofess, they had to pass the parapro test, our support staff, because it was state mandated. So I worked with our union to get that going, I worked with the Citrus County Education Association on there. Once I started working with them, I became the vice president and then later became the president. During that time, I was advocating for our students by going to Tallahassee to work with, to try to eliminate the testing to become such a du- detriment to our students. Um, also, I wanted to be part of the community outreach. So we started going to the Cooter Festival to start educating our parents on how best to advocate for our students. Went to the Manatee Festival, Strawberry Festival every year and also the Christmas Parade where we handed out books to our children. During the time with Manatee Festival and the um also the Strawberry Festival, we raised money for Jesse's Place. I also am part of committees and have been, teacher and support evaluation bargaining. I worked with bargaining team for over ten years and as on that, I worked on contracts to help our teachers and support staff. I also was part of the tech committee and the student progression plan and professional development also for our graduation. What I want to do is I want to put the right money in the right place to get the right outcomes. I'm expecting rigor and accountability for our students and teachers and I want to provide the opportunities for students to be successful in learning. So how is that done? First of all, putting the right money in the right place. Well, as a math teacher, I know how, how to look at the data and how to decide on how that money needs to go and where it needs to go to. We're too top-heavy, we need to eliminate some of the top-heavy administration positions that we have at the district office and put that money towards our teachers, support staff, bus drivers, cafeteria workers and our custodians. Expecting rigor and accountability for students. We have students that get fifty percent for doing nothing in the classroom. We need to change that, instead, we need better professional development on grading. Our grading right now is not the best, our teachers, right, they are, they are getting uh help on getting that done. And then I also want to provide the opportunities for students to be successful in learning and stop the bullying. I'm ready day one. Thank you, Victoria Smith.
Okay, our last candidate for today is Ken Frank.
I'm not taking phone calls, I'm timing myself. Thank you for the warm introduction, Vicky, um, and thank you all for coming out. It's so good to see so many um e- engaged voters in the county. Um, number one, um, just a little bit about myself, I was not born in Crystal River, Citrus County, but I've been here most of my life. I'm a product of the Citrus County school system, as is four generations of my family. There's nineteen of us that have either benefited from or will be benefiting from it. Um, what sets me apart from the other candidates, uh, everybody's got good ideas, you know, and you talk, you talk about, you know, changing policy and doing stuff, um, the school board, uh, by nature, we do, does two things. We set and implement policy and pass the budget and we deal with the budget. So let's talk about policy, that, that's where I can help out. I have that a career, I'm a licensed professional engineer. I, I've worked for and on boards my entire career, making big changes through setting and developing and setting big policies. Um, you can go on Facebook, you can go on Soundoff, everybody's got a good idea, right? And everybody says they need to do something about it, how come somebody doesn't do this? Well, I am that somebody, I know how to work with effectively, be on a board, establish, develop, create and get across the finish line, big policies. Um, there's problems in our classrooms right now, there's problems in our buses, we've got teachers leaving, we've got school bus drivers that don't show up to work. We've got all kinds of problems there and, and my philosophy is the, the uh decision-making needs to be pushed down to the level, the frontline level of the teachers. It's, we're, we're, as, as, as Vicky said, we're very top-heavy, not so much with the number of people, but with the decision-making. That these teachers and the school bus drivers need to be able to control their classrooms. And it's the policies that set that in place. Um, I've done that my entire career and I intend to do that when I get on the Citrus County School Board. I've already developed relationships with all the school board members. I've been working with the school board on and off, either as, as they're my client or through my positions as a assistant county administrator, thank you. Assistant county administrator or as the past city manager for the city of Crystal River. All of these things have put me in a position of starting day one, helping these people develop and implementing big policy changes. And it's going to take thick skin because there's a lot of things that, you know, the administration does not want pushed down to that level because they lose control of it. But listen, folks, you've got to be able to do that. You go into Walmart and you've got a, you've got a receipt in your hand and, and you want to return something and the cashier says, yes, this here's your money back. That's a good experience. I don't want to be the place, because we are right now, where you go to Walmart and they say, oh, we need to get the manager and he's at lunch right now. So you need to come back in thirty minutes so he can, he can write your check. I want to be the guy that lets the, the teachers and the school bus drivers control their own destiny in their own classrooms. So I asked that you uh in August of uh twenty, August twenty this year, that you thank Frank and stop by my table and I'll, I'll pass on my message to you. So thank you.
Did we have a round of applause for all the candidates? Well, thank you all for adhering to the time restrictions, good job. I have a question for you before I let you go and speak to the candidates at their tables and the candidates' moms. Our June meeting is a meet and greet for the county supervisor of elections in the Florida House of Representatives. Where is it?
Citrus Springs, Citrus County.
Citrus Springs Community Center, thank you. The rest of you, make sure you listen, who said it, you said it, you said it, who said it? Let's try it again, the next meeting is at the?
The Laverne Community.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Thank you. Thank you for coming.